Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting of the German Township Board of Trustees to order. We all raise for the, rise for the political allegiance? Mr. Houston, could we have the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross here. Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Potter.
Here.
And this is a special meeting of the German Township Board of Trustees. It's just, it's our year-end special meeting. Purpose of the meeting is to, one, approve the minutes from December 11th regular meeting. Two, review and approve the December financial reports and approve payment of December bills. Three, review and approve amended 2023 appropriations. Four, review and potentially approve 2024 revenue and appropriation budgets. Five, approve citizen member appointments for the fire oversight in the senior oversight committees. Six, approve the 2024 Ohio Public Employees Retirement System Conversion Plan. And finally, seven, approve a resolution to self-certify a $50,000 micro purchase threshold for American Rescue Plan Act on 2024 spending.
Mr. Houston will move right on to your report.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I've given you the minutes from the December 11th regular meeting. Mr. Stubbs has given me one correction. Are there any others?
No, they look fine. Thanks for that. It's a lot of minutes, eight pages.
It was a lot of minutes. Okay, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 12, 11, 23 regular meeting minutes as corrected.
Second. Thank you very much. Any comments or any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I've given you the December financial reports. They are current through December 23rd, which is when I printed them. You have the 12, the December, the end of December fund status, the year-to-date, December cash summary by fund, the month of December cash summary by fund, the December receipts, and the December payments. I will note that there have been a few transactions that have hit the bank since that date, and so next month I will give you revised December reports. But for tonight, there were three I want to note. First one is receipt number 197 for $9,276.23 from Germantown Union Cemetery. It is the final payment on the 2006 loan that the trustees made to the cemetery board for the purchase of the West Land. So that loan is now paid in full. I'm sure the cemetery is glad to have that taken care of.
Absolutely.
The next one is voucher 1001. It's for $3,212. It's to senior glass and lock, and that is for the replacement of the township hall rear exterior door and frame, and that was paid using ARPA funds. And finally, voucher number 11038 for $7,150 to the Bureau of Workers' Compensation is our full-year 2024 premium, which entitles the township to receive a 2% discount. Are there any questions about the financials? Hearing none, could I ask for a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of December bills?
Okay, I will introduce a motion to approve the December financial reports and authorize the payment of December bills for its 50720 to 50725 and vouchers 953 through 1038 for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholding, and other electronic payments.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I have given you the current amended 2023 appropriations. And just a reminder how this works. In January, you approve appropriations for the year that are in the budgets that we review at a meeting like tonight. And then throughout the year, I make some changes to the appropriations as needed to pay bills. And then at this meeting every year, you approve the amended appropriations. That process is, has been acceptable to the auditor for many years. I don't see that changing. So you now have appropriations totaling $3,389,000. I'm sorry, $3,389,402.61. And we should approve the amended appropriations as a resolution. We'll make that number 61.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2023-61, a resolution authorizing amended 2023 appropriations totaling $3,389,402.61 as attached.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will follow the roll. Dr. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
And Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-61 is adopted. Next item on the agenda is to review our appropriation budgets for 2024. And I've given you quite a number of documents. So let's just, let's start with the first one, which is our tax and revenue budget schedule that we receive from the county. I've given you Schedule A, Schedule B, and a form called the Local Government Fund Distribution. And you'll notice that the Schedule A is in two columns. One is the inside millage, and the second one is the voted levy millage. Now, those numbers are what we are allowed to budget for revenue for each of the tax items. And then the third page, which has the local government fund, is the amount I'm allowed to budget for local government. Any local revenues that don't involve taxes or local government fund, we can then budget whatever we want. So with that in mind, let's start down through the departments. Let's start with the police department. And before we get into the actual budget, I know that Chief Birch has made a request in an email, and I'll let you discuss it.
I don't have the email.
Well, you do.
I do have the email. Actually, I'll just read my email. I'd like to discuss the possibility of changing the police clerk pay scale. I received the attached recently, which is a pay list for West Carrollton for their clerks. I checked around, and that's pretty typical of what police clerks are. Um, so with Wes Carrollton pay range being 2055 to 2751 and out, I'd like to show an increase with Shauna above her 4% that we had talked about. I'd like to propose to move her to the starting pay, somewhere within the starting pay of what Wes Carrollton pays. That would be anywhere from $21 to $22 an hour for 2024. With our overall dependency on Shauna, I think that she's well worth.
What was Lori's on 2235? Was it 2235?
When Lori Warback retired, she was making $22.35, and that was in 2020.
Yep.
So we're now four years later with all the inflation since then. And she was also salaried. So she was not getting overtime. She was getting comp time.
Yep.
And what is her pay scale now?
Do you make it now?
Currently 1840.
So you would take that times 4%.
1917, I think it was.
Yeah, 1917. 1914 would be what she would make in 2024, 4%. So I suppose.
Pay increase would, would apply to the, well, trash in zoning.
We should, whatever we do, we should roll over to trash and zoning. So what's the number we're comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with 22.
Okay.
You know, I think that in that range of Wes Carrollton.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a typical Middletown, Wes Carrollton. She doesn't do any different, maybe probably than what the police clerks do in those agencies. And 22 is fair.
I think just with your performance, you deserve the, the rates now.
And even, I mean, even if it didn't get approved, I appreciate consideration. Appreciate you, Birch, for adopting her.
Are we comfortable with 2022?
I am, yeah.
Yes, I am.
Yes, okay. So with that in mind, the numbers you're going to look at are all going to change. So Tuesday, I will give you new reports, spreadsheets that have the higher salary for her. It's also going to affect Oprah's Social Security, I'm sorry, Medicare. I think those are the two that will affect. If I, if I miss one, I'll, I'll pick it up by Tuesday, or Wednesday, when we meet. But that in mind, we can still go ahead and review all the budgets. We just know that the salary we send in the three funds that have Shauna's salary will change. And so you'll see those on, on Wednesday. So if you look at the police fund, and I've given you a comparison to 2023's total year, either revenue budget or expense dispersments. And I've also given you, I'm sorry, the total actuals. I've given you then the revised budgets. And then I've given you the 2022 actuals. So in the revenue side of that, I'm expecting 850, 8,000 and change, most of which is tax-related. And you saw those numbers and what we just discussed a few minutes ago. There's 709,000 in property tax. There's 42,000, which I believe will be approximately what we get for the homestead and rollback. You've also approved at an earlier meeting, at the December meeting, that we would transfer into the funds affected by trustee and fiscal officer salary allocations. For the police department, that's going to be approximately 16,000. You also decided at the December meeting to give the police department the 18,000 rent from the cell tower. And finally, the last revenue item is a contract with Valley View Schools, which are estimated at 73,000 and change, all which will bring us to payments of 858. And I'll let the chief discuss, and Mrs. Close discuss the, the expenses. But they total 1154 before we make the changes for Mrs. Close's salary.
So I'll be honest, Shauna did most of the work on this, and we met often and went back and forth. So to be honest, I'd rather her discuss if you'd like.
I don't have one in front of me.
Well, I can go through it.
Are there questions?
Yeah, does anybody have any?
I pretty much do what we do every year, and I figure the numbers, and then I pad everything a little bit harder just to have it, because if it's not there, then we have to do transfer of funds and all of that. So I like to pad a few different things. I know I increased vehicle repairs this year because we went over. Last year, we had a couple unexpected issues with cars. And with a few of our cars being a little older, I put a little extra money in those funds. I had to increase salary and health insurance because we're planning on hiring another full-time officer. So that's hard to figure because you don't know who you're going to get, where they're going to start on the pay scale, how many kids they're going to bring in for insurance. So I think I figured high, I figured like a step four on the pay scale. Because like I said, I'd rather be high than not have enough. And I figured, I think we'd pay out the most for Andy Bateman because he's got the most amount of dependents. So I just took what we paid for him for health insurance and figured that in, just as a kind of estimate. We padded a fund for hiring because with the hiring of full-time and potentially another part-time, there has to be the psychological evaluations and the
Polygraph.
Polygraph, yeah, and the medical test. So there's a fund for that. And the psychological evaluations went from 500 to 1,000. And I think, I think I padded that enough where our psychological evaluations for the sergeant position and all of that would still be okay. I think, I'm trying to think. I did budget for a new cruiser.
Yeah, we went a little high on the new cruiser. It was told that it may be $2,000 increase, but then I talked to the department. Anyway, I talked to another department, and they said it's well over 2,000 for a new. I talked to the board. Yeah. And I believe it was like a $6,000 year before. So we're, right now, we haven't gotten any quotes on cruisers yet. But I tried to find out what people were paying recently versus, because I think it's been two years since we bought one. So we're, we're looking at increasing and an up that we're looking at about a two grand increase and up to. So she padded that a little bit to, to make sure we didn't go.
I like to, I like to pad most of the funds a little bit, at least a little bit, some more than others, just because I was always taught that if you don't budget it, then it's harder to get that money without having to, it'd be a pain in the butt for Mark. And it's more.
Padding, it's all within the
Yeah.
It didn't go.
Yeah, we don't, we never go over budget. But it has also worked well in the past few years where padded, and then we've not had as many expenses. And our carryover was significantly more than I had anticipated this year, so.
Look at this year as a comparison.
Yeah.
What we budgeted was 980, almost 984,000 of dispersments. You only, 806. So, you know, you're 100 and, almost 180,000 less spending than what you had budgeted. So I expect some of that will happen again next year.
That's the hope.
Now, if, if we didn't, we would see that the fund balance would be dangerously small. But I don't expect that to be the case. But, well, on the other hand, you know, we have seen the fund balance go up and down. But this year, at, at least, it's, it's increased. So I think they start out 2024 in pretty good shape. Does anybody have any changes that they want to see or any questions?
Now, something that I was talking to Jeremy about, that we didn't have to budget because we were just talking about was buildings looking kind of rough, the paint on the building. We're starting to see seepage from the blocks, the concrete blocks, where it's holding water. So that's something that we would have to discuss sharing between the police department and the trustees to get the whole building painted.
You could use ARPA money.
It could be.
That being said, I did put, I think, 8,000 or 10,000 in improvement of sites. My thought, when I put that in there, the carpet in the road room is pretty rough. I know it's been discussed, kind of tossed in the air before about potentially putting like a laminate flooring in there. I know Lori used to pay to have it cleaned, but you can only clean so much. You know, the guy's coming in with money boots, and it's just, it's gross. And it's wearing. So I had padded that a little bit with the thought of seeing how much that would cost us to put laminate in there. But that money could be used, I mean, it's improvement of sites. It could be used for, for the building. And I did put a post on, on my personal Facebook asking for recommendations for exterior painters. So I will start calling them next week just to get quotes, to see what we're looking at. I'll have them quote the whole building, and then I will have them quote just the police department, so we know how that would be lit up.
Make sure that they're, what all recommend, what all, they should have, what? Insurance. Open's call. You just can't have any Joe Blow in your painting.
Sorry, what was the question?
What qualifications does a contractor have to have to, to do work for the township? Because, you know, if somebody came in, they didn't have insurance, they didn't pay workman's comp, and they were just kind of, you know, fly by night.
I think that would be risky.
Yeah, so, you know, you want to make sure.
It needs to be a legitimate.
Yeah, you know. That's the only thing you got to watch out with Facebook is, yeah, I know how to paint.
Well, no, yeah, no, I'm not looking for any, I know someone texted me, and they're like, I heard you're a high school guy. And I was like, yeah, probably not that way we're going to go, but.
What is that called bonded? They have to be bonded.
I don't know if you have to be bonded anymore. And you, you should at least have insurance.
He's a big world.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
You're a company, then it should all have, well, they should have what they need.
But do you guys agree? I mean, we were noticing a few spots. We don't want the brick to start eroding. So it was something, either we can budget for it this year, or we can wait another year, but I don't.
I really don't see that being a big call.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not going to be a lot of prep work because it's not really flaking off. It doesn't need to be scraped. Probably a quick wash and then just a heavy coat of paint. It's here. I think it'd be nearly as much as, I'd be surprised if it's deflation.
Well, if we, if we would want to use ARPA money, we don't want to budget for it. Because it needs to be a non-budgeted item.
We weren't budgeting something that just came up. I just noticed it.
We used RK construction at the cemetery on the house, and they did a great job.
Okay.
Also, I can give you their number later.
So would you like to see any changes? Now, that's the primary police budget, but we have our primary police fund, but we have five other police funds that are very minor on the second page of your report. But those, some of those never even get any expenditures.
Well, the only one that really does is the K9 fund.
Is the K9, correct. So if you have any changes that you'd like to see, otherwise, if you're good with this, with the modifications for Shauna's salary, we can move on, whatever you think.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, guys, for putting all the time and effort into it.
I know, that works on a spreadsheet, you said.
Well, short-term or longer term, the police fund is in good financial shape. So you're not looking at putting a levy on the ballot.
If they spent this million 155 next year, yeah, we would be talking about 11 in November. So we probably want to look a year and see where they are. But.
Yeah, because the figure when it, you know, comes out, fund balance is of $68,000, that's a little too.
That is very scary.
But if you look what I, I think it was right, it was like that last year where I budgeted most of it, and the fund balance wasn't, at, at the end of the budget, the fund balance wasn't very high. Is that correct?
In 2022, we took the fund balance from the beginning of the year at 201 to 254. And then for 2023, we took 254 and increased it to 365. So I think, I, I can't see that we're going to, they're going to spend this what, what they budgeted. So I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, that's my question.
But we're going to have to watch it.
I think a year from now, especially when we do increases out while the, possibly next year.
I think let's get fully staffed. Too, too low, right? Too, too shy of being fully staffed right now. So.
And then you'll have a better idea of what you're actually spending.
Yes.
Okay, dude, I'd say move on, Mark.
Move on. All right, so the next one we'll do is Mr. Holberg's funds. And I've given you both the spreadsheet that I prepared as well as what he actually gave me, which is a PDF that looks like this. So you have that one, too. I will say, I have made a couple minor changes to what is on your PDF. In several places, you put in auditing expense. I'm not going to charge those particular funds. I did add election expense, though, because we're going to have to pay for that road levy in Fund 2141. And in order for you to keep a positive ending balance, I reduced the amount that you have in 24, 21, 2141 from 3950 down to 3,800. Otherwise, you'd have had a negative fund balance, and that would not be allowed. I couldn't give that to the auditor with the official certificate.
Where did, where did it go from to?
3950 to 3,800. So if you look at Mr. Holberg's first fund, which is motor vehicle license tax, that stays pretty consistent with about 16,000 or so of revenue every year. I have put in the interest because that's one of the funds that's allowed to have interest. And by the way, going back to the police, we are going to talk about whether we give the, the various funds that currently don't receive interest. Interest. I'll have that hopefully by the main, the, not next Wednesday's meeting, but the regular January meeting, and we can talk about that. Okay, so back to Mr. Holberg's fund. And then he has estimated 44,380 in expenses, basically taking that down almost to a zero balance at the end of 2024. But the big question is what he, whether he'll end up spending in road repair. He's budgeted 36,380. He may have to spend less than that.
It's kind of the same situation as the police department. You budget all those numbers and contracted, the, the contracted road repair is a little different because you do try to spend as much money as you feel comfortable spending on the roads because next year it's just going to cost more to do the same amount of work. Like equipment repairs and maintenance, we very rarely reach that $8,000. I didn't budget for any equipment, or tools this year. And as we go down through here, we'll come back, I'll think about that. But I just want to let you know, you know, we very rarely, you know, we budgeted the entire fund. Most of the time, we didn't this year, but we never spent it all, so it's a carryover.
And you saw that this year. You budgeted 30,980, and you only spent 8,000. Now, 19 of that was a placeholder for you, I think, for the potentially equipment purchase. But, yeah, so. I'm sure he will end the year more than 169, mainly because he couldn't spend that amount on road repair midsummer because this money comes in every month. So until December, you don't actually get all the revenue. Although we could spend it, and we could advance it from the general fund. But that's a whole different discussion. The gas tax, again, we can usually get in the range of upper 130s. I went ahead and put 140 in. He gets his interest. And I, every one of the places where interest revenue is currently being received, I bumped those numbers up. One, because we didn't get full year this year at the higher rates. They slowly work their way up through the year. And two, although people are saying the rates may drop a quarter or half point in 2024, that won't make a huge difference considering we're at five and a half right now. So I budgeted then the transfer in, and that's the salaries and benefits from the general fund. And so with total revenues of 159,000, and you've budgeted, Mr. Holberg, I think, 43,600. and you've budgeted, Mr. Holberg, I think forty-three thousand, six twenty-five in total. And it's mainly the trustee salaries and paving materials. And then you've got eighty-five hundred in there for crack sealing and marking.
A lot of that is, is goes, other than the salaries of the trustees, which obviously we're not paying, we're getting reimbursed for. That whole fund mainly goes to road repair. There's no salaries in there now that's being reimbursed. But yeah, we're trying to put all that money back into the roads to, keep them up and keep them taken care of.
And so he will take his, assuming he spends as he's budgeted, will increase his fund balance from thirty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, which will give him some starting money for two thousand twenty-five, either for road work or for potentially purchasing new equipment through this fund. We'll see. Okay, the next one is road and bridge. This is one that has property tax, that number is given to me by the auditor, we saw that earlier. Same with the Homestead rollback allocation. And as you decided at the December meeting, we increased the transfer in from the general fund for mowing of the cemeteries and the township building from four thousand, we increased it to eight thousand. So total revenues of almost a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and Mr. Holberg has budgeted a hundred and sixty-four thousand in expenses. And that's primarily driven by the salaries, the four percent increase.
French benefits.
And medical. And, and that is the medical premiums, I think, isn't it? Yes. And then property insurance of eighty-four hundred, which is a estimate at this point.
Now, that, I'm sorry, that is the, the HRA money.
That is the spending.
Yeah.
But the.
Premiums go in.
The premiums go into twenty-one forty-one, which is road.
Thank you, thank you. Anything you want to say about that?
There in, in twenty thirty-one, which is road and bridge, which we, what we were just talking about, there is going to be some money left on the table in that fund as well, that we're not budgeting for, for possible projects come first of the year.
I estimate that you'll have a year-end fund balance there of seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah, that's about right.
Okay, twenty-one forty-one is our road levy fund. And so the tax money and the property tax allocations are numbers that are given by the auditor. And Mr. Holberg has budgeted two hundred and five, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand is the total revenue, and he's budgeted two hundred and five thousand in expenses, and basically taking that fund almost to zero. Now, the biggest item in that one is the payment to Germantown, a hundred and six thousand is the estimate based on the tax revenue number. The medical hospitalization, sixty-one thousand, that is the premiums. And of course, as we discussed a month or so ago, they went up by, what was it, four, five percent?
That goes up today.
Uh, no, it was less than that.
You put on something.
Yeah. It started out at four or something, and then they were a little bit used to our.
So this one's going to be a sort of a tough one for you to manage through next year.
Well, the OPERS comes out of that as well. So OPERS in the medical, workers' comp, those are the big ones. And then pretty much anything else that's left in there will probably go into that contracted road repair implications. Yeah, that one's always kind of tight. It's kind of a juggling act of where to take, you know, salaries and the benefits and road repair and try to get all the funds to kind of, you know, you don't want to take Scott's salary out of the road levy and Jeremy's salary out of, you know, per se motor vehicles or something like, we try to keep things somewhat organized, but becoming more and more difficult as, as things cost you more. Stay the same. So, any questions on the road levy?
First of all, I think, let's, let's go back and look at the property tax. Counties only go to let the budget, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, that's on the road levy fund. But this year, we, we got a hundred and ninety, well, including the rollback, we got a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. I don't see why it would be less next year than it is this year. So I don't really understand.
Don't they always hold you at eighty percent?
Ninety.
Ninety?
Or ninety-five, one of the two, ninety or ninety-five, hold on.
I don't think it matters, but I know they, they kind of hold you back just in case people don't pay their taxes.
Yeah, I think it's ninety-five.
Okay.
But yes, you're right.
But still, that's still a pretty significant difference between, what'd you say, just shy of two hundred and, hundred and eighty?
Hundred, hundred and eighty-seven versus hundred and ninety-nine, that twelve thousand will make, if.
Make a big difference.
A huge difference to the ending fund balance. But you will have to watch that account, because at least with property taxes, most of it comes in, in May, some of it earlier than that, because we get advances. And in September, October, again, we get advances for the second half. But by the end of October, we pretty much have all of our tax money in. And this is one of those that we'll talk about in terms of interest. So it's possible that we could give some interest money to this, this account. Although we're not going to call it interest, when we put it in there, it'll be just an advance from our. The final fund for you, Mr. Holberg, is your permissive motor vehicle tax. That has really been a great fund since we added the additional five dollars. And you can see the revenues are approximately sixty-two, sixty-three thousand. They get interest, so the total revenue I'm projecting is sixty-five, and your projected expenses total seventy-eight. And most of that's road repair. So that is all of the.
Really spend much last year in salt. So there was a nice little carryover. That's another one of those things that you have to budget high. Not budget low, you know, but you have no idea, you're at the, at the mercy of whatever the weather. You know, knock on the wood, you know, we've made it through the first half of the year and we, you know, into the new year without.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's good and bad. It'd get really nasty in January, February, part March. But there again, we're leaving some money on the table. Anything that could pop up to start the year off then?
I think you'll have at least fourteen thousand. And again, this is one of those funds where you get it a little bit every month. So even though, you know, road repair is in the summer, we won't have that money available to use. Not all of it by summertime.
This year worked out really well, because we had some contractors do some work early. We had some do some mid-year, so it kind of spread them apart, let those funds kind of re, regroup, so hopefully we can do that again next year. Yeah, thanks.
So with all that in mind, anything you'd like to see changed in the road department funds? Anything? Okay, we'll move on. The next one is a, is, the next spreadsheet is the general fund, and then on page two is the trash fund. So the general fund, we started out this year, two thousand twenty-three, with a fund balance of two fifty-six, and we're going to end up somewhere around three twenty-six. And I'm projecting with all the things you've already decided, to be about three seventy-five. Total revenues, I think, will be about two hundred and ten thousand. The property tax is given to us by the county. The licenses and permits, I estimated, but they, two years ago, they were eighteen thousand, of which ten was the Valley View School permit to build, so I think we're at nine or ten thousand probably next year. Fees, fines, estimated, the local government distribution is given to us by the county. Cigarette tax fees, tiny property allocation, that's again given. The count, line nineteen, which is intergovernmental, and it's cemetery loan, but that was in twenty-two and twenty-three. But for two thousand twenty-four, that twenty-five thousand is a swag. It's what the JED might give us. I have no idea. So far this year, from the JED, we have received about twelve thousand dollars, so.
Not a big windfall.
So far.
Yes.
But I do think the JED's having trouble collecting from some of the subcontractors. So I put in twenty-five, it'll be what it is. I put in a hundred thousand for interest. And, and again, the total year of ninety thousand doesn't include December interest, so we're going to be right around a hundred, probably, by the time we get December's interest. And some miscellaneous non-operating. So anyway, that's our revenue, our expenses, all of the salaries in the administrative section are reflecting the two thousand twenty-four rates for trustees and myself. OPERS is based on total salaries, social security is Mr. Potter and myself. OPERS is simply Mr. Stubbs and Dr. Cross. Workers' comp, Medicare, we're going to be audited in two thousand twenty-four, and the general fund gets portioned. Police gets a portion, road gets a portion, so it's an estimate of what it's going to cost. UAN fees are not going up. Tax collection, about what we pay every year, election expense should be a little less because of, uh, next year, but we'll see. The travel and meeting expense, those are mostly reimbursed, and I believe that's you, Dr. Cross, and Mr. Stubbs going to OTA hotels, and then you reimburse.
Right.
Which goes up into miscellaneous. Property taxes, I'm sorry, property insurance, we still don't have a bill, so I'm estimating other expenses, they vary from year to year. The twenty thousand to the water and sewer district is a requirement, and then you see the four transfers to the various funds for salaries and for the mowing. Then in the township hall expenses, this year, the thirty-seven thousand in the final budget was because I initially put the roof expense into the general fund, and then you approved it later to be paid out of the ARCA money. So when you see the total year for two thousand twenty-three, it's hardly anything, but the budget has what I appropriated and nothing for next year. And then for the zoning department, except for Mrs. Close's salary and the OPERS and the Medicare, that's pretty much a standard. And so without any other changes, I think we'll be at three seventy-six thousand in our fund balance at the end of next year, and we'll talk next month, next, at our meeting in January about any other transfers out of the general fund. Turning over to the next page, the garbage fund. This year, our fund balance went from a hundred and thirty approximately to a hun- hundred and thirty-seven. So we're going to start out the year in pretty good shape. This two hundred and sixty is my estimate based on the higher rates that we implemented in fourth quarter this year. And the special assessments are those collections of past dues that are certified over to the county and come in through the tax collections. And then there's the general fund transfer for salaries and benefits of the trustees and myself. The total expenditure is two eighty-two, of which majority of that's the two sixty to Rumkey, and that's an estimate. Interestingly enough, the bill we paid in fourth quarter did not have an increase. So I don't know whether we're billed in arrears. Do you have any?
I, I don't know. They should, I would have thought it went up.
I didn't call Rumkey to ask because I thought. Why, why open that box up? We'll see what happens with the January bill. So if everything works as I've estimated, the fund balance will go from a hundred and thirty-seven to a hundred and thirty-nine. Again, I think we're in good shape. Any questions or any changes you'd like to see to the general or the trash fund? None? Okay. And the last one we're going to discuss are all the other funds, including the joint levy funds. So the park fund, and these revenue numbers are all what the county tells us. So a hundred and three thousand in revenue. We have the tax collection fees, we pay out ninety percent to Germantown, and so we, we take our fund balance from fifty-eight thousand to sixty-nine thousand. The pool levy, the same thing, total revenues of ninety-one thousand from taxes. We have a seventy-six hundred thousand payment to the city for ninety percent. We have the election expense from the pool levy last year. Because it did not come in this year, I mean, it did not come in in two thousand twenty-three, I expected it would, so it'll come in in two thousand twenty-four. It has to at some point hit us. And so we'll take that fund balance from eighty-seven to ninety-six. The fire levy, we take the balance of two thirty-two to two sixty, with two hundred and eighty-six thousand of revenue, a two hundred and fifty-one thousand payment to the city at ninety percent. And then we also, the electricity of the sirens is also charged into this account, and, and the payment is reduced by those expenses and also by the emergency payment we make to the county, which is a per capita payment, I've estimated at five hundred dollars. Senior citizen levy, I think will go from a hundred and forty-four thousand fund balance to a hundred and sixty-two, with receipts of a hundred and eighty-two, payment to them at ninety percent of a hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then the tax collection piece is the only thing else. Finally, the fire EMS levy from two thousand and ten, we take the fund balance from two seventy-three to three oh nine. Revenues are three hundred and sixty-three, and payments to the city, three twenty at ninety percent. The only other funds we have are the American Rescue Plan, where I'm going to estimate we're going to spend it all in two thousand twenty-four. The Sunbury Fund, which we never spend any money out of, because we can only spend the earnings, and the Fouts Fund, where with interest, estimated at fifteen hundred, we're, we should still be able to make that two thousand dollar payment in two thousand twenty-four. Any questions or changes on the others funds? No?
Where is that Sunsbury Cemetery West Fund, where is it earning interest at? Sunsbury Cemetery Fund?
It does not receive interest.
It does not receive any interest?
No, it is something that could receive interest, but has never received in the past. At least.
Not that there's a lot in there.
In my years.
Right.
It is one of those, I'm pretty certain. It's one of those. It's one of those that is.
Is this one you asked?
It's either can or it may receive interest, but is not required to. So.
But we could.
Give it interest. But we only, we can only spend the interest. What you're saying?
I'm sorry. The Sunsbury Fund does receive interest, and we can only spend the interest. There is, I think, five thousand that is non-spendable in the Sunbury Fund. Okay, any thoughts about budgeting at this point? If not, we can move on to the next subject. I have given you the option that you could have approved these appropriations tonight. I do not want you to do that because we need to redo them all based on your higher salary. So it's a lot. It won't be, it won't be a lot of work, but we'll, we'll prove it next Wednesday. Okay, certain members of the fire oversight committee and the senior oversight committee, their terms are expiring at the end of this year. The city has informed me that those affected members are all interested in serving another term. The council will consider these appointments at their meeting next week. And they, these appointments also need to be approved by the township as follows. So for the fire oversight committee, Jeffrey Bobbitt and Glenn Yurka would like to serve again. And for the senior oversight, Frida Emrick would like to serve again. And I think we can do that with a motion.
We are, okay.
It doesn't matter. Go ahead. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
I do have one question before we vote on it, though. I thought Glenn Yurka resigned. Did he not?
Or I thought Glenn Yurka resigned. A year ago, okay. And I don't know why, I just, I thought he's still.
Okay. Yep.
The, the newer lady resigned.
Oh, maybe that's.
I believe there's still a vacant state.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
The opposed? Thank you. Every year in order for unused vacation and sick time that is cashed out to be considered earnable salary by the opers, the township needs to have an annual conversion plan on file with opers. And so every year we must reauthorize the conversion plan. And I, I've given you the draft of the resolution, and this will establish the twenty twenty-four plan. If someone would like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-two.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two. Resolution author is authorizing the fiscal officer to execute an annual conversion plan for twenty twenty-four with the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System.
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution? During that, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-two is adopted. Our last item of business. Back in June of twenty twenty-two, you adopted a resolution to authorize an increase in the micro purchase threshold from ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars for most American Rescue Plan Act funds. It was forty-five thousand for road maintenance or repair, but everything else was fifty. And that is allowed under the federal code, the code of federal regulations. And that micro purchase threshold needs to be reauthorized each year by a resolution. I've given you the resolution. I don't think we need to read it in entirety, but I'll leave that up to you. And that would be number sixty-three.
How do you want us to? I introduce resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three.
We just.
To increase the micro purchase threshold, reauthor, reauthorize the micro purpose threshold.
Authorizing the increase in micro purchase threshold for twenty twenty-four, I think, would be fine.
Okay, and I'll second.
Any discussion of the resolution? Now I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-three, which I believe will probably be our last resolution of the year. Is adopted. And with that, I am done.
I do that one thing. Just so you guys know, Carl Keith will be here on January fourth at two o'clock for Edis's annual license ever. I'd like that to visit some.
Let's get a photograph and let's get it on the Facebook page and. Sounds good.
Seeing that no other business can be discussed tonight, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
He's. I'll make the motion if there are. How's that?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned to seven fifty-five. Good night, everyone.